We'll call this meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Pugnay?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. All present and accounted for. Let us stand for our flag salute, which will be led by our Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Mills.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning, just, or all.
There are no presentations this evening. Report on the posting of the agenda by city clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. The council has before them tonight additional materials for item two, and inside your yellow folder are a number of letters and emails that we received regarding public hearing item number three.
All right. Thank you. And closed session report by city attorney?
Yes, councilman. Closed session. On the closed session agenda for the agency, we discussed the status of real property negotiations involving the golf course hotel with Swank. We gave a status report. No action was taken. Concerning the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, we gave a status report. No action was taken. The other real property items involving VIP, Gavey, and Westman were not discussed. For the city of Palm Springs, we gave a status report on real property negotiations with Desert Water Agency concerning wastewater treatment plant. Direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken. Concerning Palm Springs Town Homes, we gave a status report. Direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken. Concerning the Stitch Parcel, that item was not discussed. The litigation matter Flanagan versus City of Palm Springs, we gave a status report concerning settlement. Direction was given for further negotiations. No action was taken. The labor item was not discussed. Concerning exposure to litigation in four cases, we gave a status report on one. No action was taken. There was an item that had been added to the agenda involving a specific litigation matter, Perma versus City of Palm Springs. We gave a status report on that item. Direction was given for further settlement negotiations. Concerning the other items on the agenda, the initiation of litigation was not discussed. The city attorney evaluation was discussed, and no action was taken.
Thank you. The housing authority, the industrial development authority, the financing authority, and the community redevelopment agency have no business this evening, and we will now open the floor up for public comments. And if there's anyone who would like to speak to item number three, that will be reserved for the public hearing. If you want your comments read into the minutes, otherwise, this is for issues that are within the jurisdiction of the city. I only have one card, well, possibly two, this evening. And the first one is for Sergio Santos. Please come forward at this time. You will have three minutes. And the next card is by Sonia Marchand, but if this is for item number three, Sonia, then it will come under public hearing. Good evening and welcome. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Ms. Vogt, the CVTOA, just wanted to thank you for the mention at the last council meeting. I know we left early, so we saw you on TV. Thank you for asking about the advertising. This new thing that we presented tonight, creating a standalone taxi regulator for the Coachella Valley, Mr. Oden, you and I had talked at the SEVAG executive meeting last month. This basically was what we wanted to discuss. We put it in writing. Everything is there. It's our need to get out from the regulation of Sunline Service Group over there. And this month, you being on the board over there also, Percy Byrd, councilman Byrd, last month promised us that this issue would be addressed at this month's Sunline Board Meeting. And, you know, if it's on that agenda for this month, well, okay, but, you know, usually these things have a way of slipping through the cracks, as we have found out over the last 11 years. Everything is in black and white in this thing. And one thing that I think you should look is on the very last page is Sunline's budget, their expense report for the taxi administration. Miraculously, overnight, their employee salaries have been cut in half from over $10,000 a month to $5,000 a month, like that. And we've sat down and we've calculated, we don't know where over a million dollars is in taxi regulatory funds for the last 10 years. And we've been trying to get these people to show us, and we've asked nicely, and all we get are reports, different kinds of reports with different numbers. And you've seen the other budget things. This has gone down from like $300,000 a year for employee salaries. This is, we're tired. We got to get out from these people. And please, whatever this council can do for us, if you're willing to take over the regulation of taxi cabs, that'd be great, or SEVAG, or anybody. We're being regulated by our competition over there. And now, to the advertising. We're still, I'm hoping that we're still on track with that. But other than that, this is everything tied together, and we appreciate your help on this, and thank you very much.
And thank you. Would you please come forward, give your name to the clerk? You'll have three minutes. Good evening and welcome.
Bob Evans, Palm Springs. I'd just like to thank the city council, and David Reddy, David Brackian, and the planning department for helping the Movie Colony Association get street blocked. It was only last Wednesday I asked you to get it on the agenda. Well, guess what? It was on the agenda, and that proves this city got soul. Thank you very much.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. If not, then we will close public comments. There is no consent agenda. We will move on to our legislative items. Item number one, convention center expansion, phase two, staff report, please.
Just a motion for the second reading. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mills.
I would move the ordinance, read text, no, retitle, waive text.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vogt. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This would be an ordinance of the city council of the City of Palm Springs, California, approving and authorizing the execution of supplemental lease agreement number four relating to the City of Palm Springs Financing Authority Lease Revenue Bonds 2004 Series A Convention Center Expansion Project. Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye, and it passes unanimously. We'll move to item number two, convention center expansion, phase two, grading, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'd ask I'll smoot the convention center project director to come to the microphone. He's going to speak to you this evening and ask your approval on an additional contract for the construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Mayor, members of council, had hoped to come to you tonight with the complete grading and site demolition contract. However, we've had some difficulty working through the complicated nature of the grading on this project and have not achieved a satisfactory contract on that portion yet. However, we do need to start the site demolition, so what we've asked is this contract before you tonight would be to just award site demolition to American demolition so that they could proceed with that portion of the demolition, and then next week you'll see us, and we'll be talking about grading, we hope. This is for a contract of $325,000 for the site demolition portion of the project, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions on the staff report?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Move the resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vogt. Are there any additional questions, observations? Then roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, and it passes unanimously. Now we'll move to our public hearing. Rothbart Development, Destination Ramon LLC, Walmart, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. For this public hearing, this hearing is regarding to Walmart with several factors that have to do with that project. Mr. Evans will explain those in its entirety and give the complete staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a project application by Rothbart Development Company, Destination Ramon, for a project that one of the tenants would be a super Walmart. The project is located on Ramon Road, just east of Lowe's and San Luis Rey, and just west of Rosalie Road, and it's located in the city of Palm Springs. The action before you and the actions the planning commission recommended that the council consider, first would be adoption of the statement of facts and findings, statement of overriding considerations, mitigation monitoring program, and certify the final environmental impact report as complete for purposes of SEQA. The planning commission also recommended approval of a tentative tract map, subject to conditions contained in the attached resolution, and we did pass out some revised conditions having to do with recommendations from the Aguacalliente Band of Cuiya Indians and the tribal council, and I'll go over those momentarily. You should have an additional sheet. It's one page, and the changes are in bold, so you can see what was added at the request of the tribal council. From the standpoint of the planning commission action, the planning commission recommended by a 5-1-1 vote that the city council approve these items. They did conduct a public hearing on the item. They took action on the items I mentioned. They also continued the public hearing on the conditional use permit, architectural approval applications for this project to April 28, 2004. The architectural approval application and conditional use permit have to do with the actual detailed site plan, the actual conditional use permit for drive-through facilities and the gas station, and all of the associated site improvements, but we will show the council the preliminary plans. The reason the commission made that continuance is they wanted to take a look at a couple of the details, as well as they felt that since this has an EIR, and the council is the certifying body of an EIR, that it would be appropriate to take those portions of the project up to city council while they worked on some of the details. The approval of those details are final with the planning commission. You know, under our ordinance, conditional use permits and architectural approval items are final unless appealed to the city council, so those actions would be final with the commission, but we'll certainly show you the plans. The project features 277,000 feet of retail and other related uses. As I indicated, Walmart is the anchor. It would be a super Walmart, which would have grocery, dry goods, a traditional Walmart, as well as an outdoor garden shop. That facility is approximately 225,000 square feet. There would be a gas, freestanding gas station with a very small convenience market, and then four additional retail pads totaling approximately 51,000 square feet. The action items before you are the approval of the tentative parcel map, and it basically is a subdivision map that outlines the site parcels. For a 31-acre site, it would create eight parcels ranging in size from 22 acres to just under one acre. There's also a consistency and street vacation issue. There's an existing roadway called Sky Point Drive, east, west, and north. That roadway is not designated on our general plan. The planning commission found that the vacation of that roadway is not in conflict with the general plan, and the resolutions before you include the vacation of those roadways. A little bit of history, this site was previously developed with the intent that it would be an automobile dealership project. The city was working on that. At the same time Cathedral City was working on their dealership. The dealerships ended up going to Cathedral City. This property never developed, but the improvements are there, and the public streets are there, and we're recommending that the council vacate those streets. This property is Indian leased land. It's held in trust for Indian lattees, so it's a leasehold interest project, and it's also within the reservation. Therefore, the tribal council provided written comments today. We've provided a written response to that. You have a copy of my response. And the two conditions of approval that we handed out, one has to do with public art. Tribal council asked that if the public art is located on-site, that it reflect the culture and traditions of the tribe. I've talked to the developer about that, and they're in full agreement that that would be a great theme for public art on the property. Second one had to do with just a rewording of an existing condition having to do with monitoring of cultural resources. That was condition number nine, and it has to do with making sure that any resources on-site be dealt with, and these are standard conditions. We just reworded it per the recommendation of the tribal council today. So that completes the tribal council's primary comments. Their other comment in their letter having to do with the multi-species fee of $800 per acre, that's already in the mitigation measures. It doesn't need to be added. If you act upon it the way it's recommended, that's already a condition of approval. From the standpoint of a general plan analysis, this property has a business industrial general plan designation. It's located in an area that on the west, south, and east, it's surrounded by property with that same designation. That's a general business industrial classification. It's the same land use designation that the adjoining property was developed under, and that has the Lowe's Shopping Center. We believe the project is consistent with the general plan. Property has an M1 zoning classification. That's an industrial zoning classification. That classification allows all the commercial uses in the C1, C2, and CM zones, and this type of land use is a permitted use, with the exception of the drive-throughs and the gas station, which are conditionally permitted uses in this zone. The project complies with all of the setback criteria of the zone. The closest portion of a building to the street is on Sunny Dunes, and it's the edge of the loading dock area, and it's a 20-foot setback. The perimeters of this project would be constructed in a very similar fashion to what we have at Lowe's with a nice perimeter parkway, screen walls, and landscaping all the way around the property. And I'll show you the preliminary landscape plans in a moment. The planning commission found that the tentative parcel map is consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and that it complies with all city codes and ordinances. In their review, they looked at it very carefully during their public hearing. This project required the preparation of an environmental impact report. We've provided copies of the documents to the city council. It started with the notice of preparation. In July of 2003, we received nine letters in response to the notice of preparation. The draft environmental impact report was then prepared, and it was circulated for public review from November 24, 2003, to January 7, 2004. During that review period, we received six letters in comment relative to the draft EIR. Those letters are included in the final EIR document that has the letters and a written response to each letter. We've also sent the written response to each of the agencies that submitted a comment. The final EIR basically is the compilation of all the environmental analysis, comments, response to comments, and it constitutes the full environmental record for the project. From the standpoint of the final EIR, the planning commission reviewed it and certainly recommended that it be certified as complete. The final EIR analyzed land use, planning, traffic, circulation, air quality, noise, aesthetics, light, glare, cumulative impacts. The EIR did recommend mitigation measures to mitigate impacts to a level of insignificance where possible. Relative to air quality, that was the only environmental impact that could not be fully mitigated. The planning commission found that all feasible mitigation measures were incorporated into the project, and that the project still would have a significant environmental impact. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, there's a process for the city to consider approval of a project with a significant environmental impact. The city council would have to basically find that there's benefits of the project that outweigh the unavoidable significant adverse impacts, that the impacts, even though they can't be fully mitigated, are acceptable within the community. In this particular case, we have prepared, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of a statement of overriding considerations, and this is a detailed written statement as to why the city would override the significant environmental impacts and approve the project. The project benefits that are outlined in that statement have to do with the creation of a productive commercial retail area, capitalizing on the site's access and location relative to major thoroughfares, Ramon Road, Gene Autry Trail, that the project will allow for productive use of currently vacant land within the city, commercial retail use to provide services to the residents of the city and surrounding community. As I indicated, this property was intended to be developed a number of years ago and has remained vacant for quite some time, as the community and the council is well aware of. The second, or the next benefit, the development of high-quality commercial retail uses will provide for increased economic benefits to the city, increased sales taxes, additional employment opportunities. employment opportunities, that there was a market impact study for this project prepared. It's been attached to the EIR, and the development of the project will lead to the creation of approximately 442 full-time equivalent jobs and generate an estimated revenue of $640,000 per year in sales tax. There are some additional benefits outlined in the statement of overriding considerations having to do with the items I pretty much already covered in my staff reports. I won't repeat them. From the standpoint of the information that's been provided to the city subsequent to the planning commission meeting, we've received several letters, and I'll go through them briefly and give you some comments on some of them, and then defer comments to another staff member on one of them. I've already mentioned the letter from the tribal council and how we've responded to that. We did receive an informational packet of material that came in yesterday. It's a bundle of material that includes two videotapes. It includes several brochures, one from San Diego County Taxpayer Association, Orange County Business Council, and basically the videotapes have been reviewed by staff, and they were provided to the city council by the city clerk yesterday for your review. Both tapes are pretty much the same information. They provide a fair amount of general, non-site-specific information regarding Walmart, business practices, community impact, community feelings, things of that nature. The videos do talk about economic impact in communities, neighborhood effects, city subsidies to Walmart-type projects or big-box retail in general. And I'd like to clarify for the record, there are no public subsidies whatsoever as a part of this project. There's no sales tax rebate, rebate. There's no redevelopment agency participation. The city is not paying for any infrastructure, has not been asked to do any of those things by the developer. This is a private development project paid for by private dollars, and a lot of the projects that have been criticized had subsidy involvement from a governmental agency. In looking at those tapes, there were a couple of areas that, in the tapes, having to do with local information. There were several references and testimonials regarding Cathedral City's experiences, having to do with public subsidies and how they didn't work very well, considering that when Walmart proposed a project in Palm Desert, it was announced that the Walmart in Cathedral City would close. So that announcement preceded this application to the city of Palm Springs. And then there were references by a representative of Palm Desert. There were fairly general comments about big-box retailers. Again, in reviewing the videotapes, they were general, they were not site-specific, they raised issues that clearly are very prominent in the media, print, and visual media today. So that information has been made available to the council. Staff has received three emails that register objections to Walmart business practices and how they might affect the community and the community's image. They did not have any real specific issues raised, and no new environmental issues were raised. The city of Cathedral City did write a letter. You have a copy of that letter. They've asked that it be considered part of the record in its opening statement. They implied that they would like to have us read it into the record. We've provided the city council with copies of that letter. Dave Barakian is going to talk specifically about the traffic issues that were raised, and, you know, during the review of this project, we met with Cathedral City and their engineering staff to talk about the project, project mitigation, how they deal with projects that have traffic impacts in Palm Springs, and how we have dealt with their projects and the impacts that go back the other direction. But they did submit a fairly lengthy letter, and at this point, I'm going to take a little bit of a rest and have Dave Barakian talk to you a little bit about traffic, and then he'll kick it back to me, and I'll show you the plans.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The item I was going to discuss is the attachment to the Cathedral City letter, which is a letter dated April 6th and received today from Traffic Safety Engineers Incorporated. There are some comments on that letter, which the Cathedral City letter refers to, that I'd just like to respond to. The basic comment on the first page of the letter talks about a request to study four additional intersections in Cathedral City. The traffic report for this project did study 19 intersections out more than a mile in each direction from the site, including several in Cathedral City. The city of Palm Springs policy, which is consistent with Riverside and San Bernardino Counties' policy for traffic impact analyses, has a limit. Traffic impact analyses have to have a limit. They can't analyze forever out to the last car, and so consistent with county policy, the city, the city has a policy that analyzes out to 50 peak-hour trips from a development. That's a policy that's consistently applied to all development within the city and was applied in this case. Cathedral City's request to analyze intersections of Ramon and Date Palm, Diana Shore and Date Palm, East Palm Canyon and Date Palm, and East Palm Canyon and Cathedral Canyon are intersections that have relatively low percentages of traffic, all less than, considerably less than 10% projected from this development. And study of those intersections not only would be inconsistent with policy applied to other developments, but really wouldn't lead to anything conclusive for such small volumes of traffic impacting those intersections. The second comment talks about the traffic needs to address the extent to which project traffic would impact existing poor levels of service at some intersections in Cathedral City that they, that the letter claims do not operate very well. But the intersection that they're talking about is Cathedral Canyon and Ramon, which is an offset intersection. And the Walmart study concluded that the intersection operates at an acceptable level of service, and further that any problems with that intersection could not be, could not be solved nor contributed to by the Walmart development, especially the offset angle of the existing intersection. The third comment talks about the amount of truck traffic on Ramon Road. Basically claims that the 8%, which was included in the traffic study, was too low. The traffic engineer, at the request of city staff, went out and did traffic counts, and for the record, those counts indicated that the, the traffic, the 8% was, was very much higher than the actual numbers came out to be. In fact, the truck, large truck traffic was only 1.1% of existing traffic on Ramon Road, and small trucks were only 4%. So the, the comment from this traffic engineer that, that 8% was too low has not been found to be the case when actual counts were taken. And the la, the last item with response to what they call pass-by trips, the letter takes, takes the position that the traffic report estimated too high a volume of pass-by trips. That, that means trips that are already on the road and stop at the development to do their shopping. There are, there are cases when this occurs at all shopping centers. The traffic study used the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication, which gives values for these, as, as high as 34% of the trips, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Two developments such as this are trips that are on the road anyway, due to certain circumstances, and to try to be somewhat conservative, the traffic engineer used 25%, which staff agreed, meaning one in every four trips is not, is, you know, either on the way home from work, you stop at the store, or on the way to somewhat, some other location, and the, and the trip is not purely to, to the development and back. That really summarizes the, the staff's response to the traffic engineer's comments as, as given to us by Cathedral City.
Cathedral City's letter asks that the council consider adding four additional conditions of approval to the project, and this is on page two of the letter. One, and I'll just paraphrase, that the city, the two cities work with a joint application to SEVAG to commit tump funding, to plan, design, and construct the necessary improvements to Ramon Road and any other roadways that are affected by the project. I, you know, the council, you know, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to improve Ramon Road. It probably needs some improvement today, but that's something that you could ask, that you add as more of a directive to staff, not a requirement of the developer. So you could add a now-therefore resolution item to it, or the city attorney could help us craft a good way to do that. The second one has to do with the tump fee commitment for both cities to widen the Ramon Road Bridge as it approaches the Whitewater River. I just would note that the traffic study indicated that that's really needed off in the distant future, and really caused not only by the incremental traffic caused by this project, but overall regional growth. I think both cities are going to have to be committed to that, and we've worked cooperatively with other cities and other agencies and the tribal council to do large infrastructure projects like this, and I think that that's something that, you know, again, I think Palm Springs would be willing to commit, because we're going to share that, that bridge for many, many years. Cathedral City wants us to know that they don't want to maintain any portion of the median island adjacent to the project. That would be on Ramon Road, and, you know, there is, you know, we've put some median island in on Ramon Road. We've worked cooperatively with them as they put some in, and obviously, we would extend that median island all the way down to Crosley Road. We acknowledge their position. Council may or may not wish to comment on this, that at this time. The fourth one is that they would like the city to negotiate in good faith with Cathedral City to provide a percentage of sales tax from Walmart, help to fray the cost of adverse traffic and other impacts on Cathedral City and its infrastructure. I'll make a general comment. We have not made similar requests of Cathedral City, as they have built large projects that have impacts on Palm Springs. We've had a period of time where we have lost retail sales tax dollars to our neighboring cities, including Cathedral City, and at no time did we go to Cathedral City and ask them for a share of the money back. But that's a council policy issue that the council may or may not want to address. We'll certainly help the council in trying to deal with that in any way that you would like. And with that administrative overview, we, we try not to do a long report like this, except when we have an environmental issue like this with an EIR, and we just want to make sure that all the information is clearly outlined for the city council. The project site is represented by this overall master plan. Ramon Road is at the top. Dan Lewis Ray and Lowe's is on the left. Crosley Road is on the right. The Ramon Road Bridge is, is a little bit up to the right. The Lowe's property extends from Ramon Road back to this point, so you get an idea that it's a much larger parcel. Again, the actual parcel is a little bit over 30 acres. There's a parcel here that shows no development, is not owned by Destination Ramon. It's owned by a separate property owner. The tribal council asked that we put a condition in that no parking be permitted on Lot 8, and under our ordinance, that could not be used for parking in an unimproved state. So we feel it's already covered by the city ordinances. The project circulation features a main entryway, which is to a large degree ceremonial right off of Ramon Road, where you would come in, come into a focal point, might be a pretty good location for public art in the future, and then fan people around the perimeter so they can feed into the parking lot this way. In all likelihood, a lot of, most of the people coming from the west on Ramon are going to turn at San Lewis Ray and feed into the project in these two driveways. People from the east are going to turn left on Crosley and feed into the project this way, and then people from the south obviously can come in the opposite directions. This project site, considering we have a full-grid street network all the way around it, provides outstanding access to the property, so people coming from multiple different directions do not have to come to one driveway. The same way that Lowe's works, and I think if you've been to Lowe's, you realize that the people move in and out of that project very, very efficiently, and they don't affect the public street. We feel that this site has the same type of circulation. The major tenant, the Walmart facility is here, with the garden shop located in this area, oil and lube facilities. This is a fully enclosed eight-foot-high wall and screened area for outdoor storage containers and the like, so that they have a nice area that's tucked away in the back. The truck traffic basically works in this way, in this way, so all the truck traffic is confined in here, and there's eight-foot screen walls along the back, so that to the greatest degree possible, that the loading operations are fully screened. From the standpoint of the pad facilities, they're located up here along Ramon Road. They could have a wide range of users, from food to dry goods, to any type of land use really permitted in the zoning. We suspect that there'll be retail-type users. There's one drive-through shown here, and then in this portion of the site is a proposed gas station with pull-through pumps, very liberal area insofar as the amount of circulation room around it and a very small convenience market. This is the preliminary landscape plan, and it's been looked at by design review, and they seem to be very comfortable with the preliminary concept insofar as how the project's laid out. A lot of the parking features are very similar to what Lowe's did insofar as cart storage, things of that nature, and it's a very discreet way to take care of those operational things in a parking lot. From the standpoint of the action item before you, this is the parcel map. It basically creates the eight parcels on the property, with the largest parcel being the Walmart parcel, and then the various pads all the way around, and then again, this parcel, about 3.7 acres, that's not owned by Destination Ramon and would be developed independently. The front of the building is really set up to a large degree like Lowe's, where there's a large convenient area in front of the store with demarcation where the cars are, and then where people are. I think some of the old prototypical Walmarts, the, the building was too close to the, the drive aisles. This gives people a lot of room to move around and feel very comfortable, and should have the same type of feel that Lowe's has in how it operates. These are some perspective drawings of the building. The building elevation for Walmart, the full Ramon Road frontage would be along that line. The tallest portion of the building has an element that goes up to 42 feet. It's really architectural, and then the balance of the building is 26 feet. As far as you go around, this drawing will have a parapin on it, Councilman Mills, so we won't see the mechanical equipment. The applicant wanted me to point that out to you, because we knew you'd see that first. The tribal council did have a comment in their letter about the canopy for the gas, looking a little bit more like the canopy on the building, and we'll take that back to design review and the planning commission on the 26th and 28th respectively. The building has a full use of- The building has a full use of materials. It's a fairly simple, straightforward building, and a good use of materials, and it's been received very well through the Design Review process, and they've recommended approval of it. I just looked, without a lot of additional exhibits, what the building would look like, not trying to disguise it and try to make it look like a small building. It's a large building, and the idea was to have a very nice front facade on the building, and then a crisp, clean perimeter with landscape around it to soften it up. Sign program, this is one of the monument signs for the main entry areas that we're looking at, and those are the types of details we're still working out with Planning Commission and the developer. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. I'll certainly try to answer any questions.
Counselor, are there any questions on the staff report before we open the hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Fump.
Doug, can you talk about that vacant piece of land? Is there currently any plans for development on that by the other honor?
As far as current development plans, there are no active plans in our process. Originally, we had a project approved on this site that actually came back into about here, and the front portion was a mixed-use, commercial-industrial-type building, and the back portion was mini warehousing. They basically worked out an agreement to reduce the size of this parcel, and this parcel would be developed as a retail parcel sometime in the future. So there's no plans, but the idea is to develop it with retail that would be compatible with this project.
Okay, and then, what are the hours? Are they open twenty-four hours? Is this going to be a twenty-four-hour operation?
It could be. My suggestion is we'll ask the applicant to answer that question. There's no restrictions in the Planning Commission recommendation that it not operate twenty-four hours a day. My recollection is the idea that they would like the ability to do that, and they would take a look at the market demand, but the developer is really the one that could answer that more specifically.
The reason I'm asking the question is because in reading the EIR, I didn't see any reference, and I might have just missed it because I didn't read every page, on the truck traffic, because the only way I can look at it is that the trucks that are making deliveries to this huge store are going to be coming, obviously, off the freeway, and the most likely exit for them would be Gene Autry. And so we're going to have Gene Autry being a major truck route with the new Classic Project being built on Gene Autry. So I'm sorry if I missed it in the EIR, but could you talk about that a little bit?
Well, you know, clearly, when you start dealing with a large retailer like this, they're going to take deliveries twenty-four hours a day unless they have a restricted delivery schedule just to keep things stocked. Again, the applicant can tell you what he anticipates the Walmart delivery activity to be. The Classic Project on Gene Autry Trail was analyzed for a major thoroughfare, six lanes, with the same type of truck traffic that you would anticipate on Ramone Road. In fact, as I recall, the same noise consultant analyzed both projects. If I'm correct, Mr. Gregory Endo did. Mr. Endo is in the audience. He's the traffic, air quality, and noise consultant that helped us put the EIR together. The perimeter walls at the Classic are set up to give acoustic containment for roadway noise, and secondarily, to soften a little bit of the airport noise effect. I believe that those roadways adjacent, or the parkways and the walls and the like adjacent to the Classic Project will adequately protect this, but, you know, we have truck traffic that is on the roadways twenty-four hours a day in town, going to all types of sites, both in Palm Springs and out. I just don't see it, and the EIR didn't see it as a significant environmental impact.
Okay, then, when the trucks have unloaded, then they are going to go back down Gene Autry. The reason I'm asking is because it is such a nightmare now down at Gene Autry at the ten. By two o'clock in the afternoon, the traffic is backed up practically to Vista Chino, and I'm wondering, if this is not something that was handled in the environmental impact? I mean, I think it's, I mean, how are we going to deal with that since we're not getting the funds to redo that interchange?
Well, I'll ask Dave Bracken to talk a little bit about the traffic effect of this project as it reaches Interstate Ten. And then, again, if it's, you know, part of your question had to do with evening and night traffic, obviously, the traffic effect would be a little bit different. We do have a peak hour issue in the morning and afternoon, you know, on that roadway, and it really can't be mitigated until the interchanges go in, and I think we acknowledge that in this EIR. And I know Cathedral City raised the question in response to comments. I think we addressed it there also, but Dave, do you have some additional comments?
Typically, the truck traffic, the deliveries that you're speaking of, do not coincide anywhere close to the peak hour volumes that we're experiencing at the interchange. In other words, you know, three, four, five o'clock in the afternoon is not when they're getting the majority, anywhere close to the majority of their deliveries. They're probably getting them at night. At night, there's plenty of capacity at the interchange currently, and overall, I think we want the truck traffic to use the major thoroughfares in the city as opposed to the, you know, any other streets. So in analysis of the traffic studies, they look at peak hour and whether the traffic generated from customers, delivery, what have you, for the development is going to have a negative effect on traffic in the worst case, every other case being better. And the analysis showed that since most of the deliveries are in air during times when the traffic volume on adjacent streets is not heavy at all, you know, in the nighttime, that there wasn't a major impact of delivery traffic on the interchange.
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Doug, do you know how many years the lease is on this property? Not the land, but how long is Walmart's lease on this development?
I would have to...
The reason I'm asking is because we've seen now what has happened in numerous cities, and it just happened right next door in our sister city, where Walmart went in for a ten-year lease. Nine of those years, they had this agreement regarding the taxes, where the city didn't receive only half of the taxes. We don't have that. I'm very pleased that we don't have that. But in the tenth year, in the ninth year, they get, the first year that Cathedral City was collecting taxes, they gave notice that they were going to leave. Now Cathedral City is got this huge building that's empty. I'm looking at this mammoth building and was wondering if, what is the lease time, and are we at some point in time going to look at a big, huge, seven-football-field, empty building?
The lease cannot be finally approved until after the entitlements are granted, so I think the developer still has some discussions there. I'd ask the developer to answer a specific question regarding his business lease.
Okay. I'll ask that when it's appropriate, then.
Counselor, are there any other questions before we open the hearing? Yes, Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bracken, these are, I think, probably for you. In the, in the letter from Cathedral City, August fourteenth, oh-three, they mentioned, "Site plan provided indicates a median design on Ramone Road that precludes left-turn movements in and out of Agua Caliente Trail." I can't see on the median island, I can't see the median island on the exhibit we have here, but it looks like, I mean, it still precludes that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And could you comment on why we are doing that?
We're not specifically precluding, I mean, we're not putting the median in just to stop the traffic returning left.
No, I understand, but the, but the, but the impact of not having the left turn there?
Well, the impact is basically a traffic safety impact from, from the standpoint of left turns on Ramone Road, but further, in order to put that in, I think the location of Agua Caliente Trail, is that what it's called? It isn't, it isn't possible, really, to put a raised median in Ramone Road and not, and not preclude left turns onto that particular street.
Right, right.
It's right, it's right where the, is that where?
Yeah.
Doug, just pointed it out.
Yeah, but my, my comment is to ask your comment on their comment. And which, which, they are saying, "The street provides access to existing commercial businesses and future development north of Ramone Road. A median design needs to be developed that does not preclude left-turn movements with Agua Caliente Trail." And I'm just saying, was there an analysis, an analysis done of the impact on those properties in eliminating that left turn?
No, the traffic study didn't specifically analyze the impacts of the properties in eliminating the left turn. It didn't.
But there is, there is a signalized intersection that ties in with Agua Caliente at Crosley, is that correct?
Right. You can, you can, you can easily access all of those properties by going through the signalized intersection and going around to the back of them.
That's, okay, that's fine. Then, and, let's see. Could you explain why the traffic study did not include the statistics or the traffic load from what's termed the Springs Project?
Well, the, the real reason is that, at the time this project was applied for, and the studies were done, that there was no Springs Project.
Understandable.
And further, when studies are done, there is overall growth taken into account by means of the SEVAG model, which takes into account theoretical growth of projects that, you know, don't have, you don't know about at the time. So theoretically, under the general plan of the city, and the general plan of Cathedral City, general growth is taken into account when projections are made. And typically, traffic engineers then add known projects specifically to a, to a traffic analyses to further refine, and sometimes even overrefine their projections. So the answer is that the Springs Project hadn't been applied for, and they couldn't have known, they couldn't have known to include it specifically.
But, but, but you're comfortable with, now that we know what the Springs Project is, you're comfortable with those factors that SEVAG has introduced, and based on the vacant plan, based on a general plan, that the traffic differences between that and what we see now in the submittal are, are of no, no impact?
Yes, in fact, when we reviewed, when I reviewed, the Springs Traffic Project, it is consistent with the projections in this one.
Great. Thank you. And then, Doug, I got a little bit lost on the median island maintenance. Could you, could you run that one by me again?
Yes, the median island, you know, is down the center line of the street, so fifty percent of the median would be in the city of Palm Springs, and fifty percent would be in the city of Cathedral City. Because this project is before us, and it's going to cause the construction of that median, Cathedral City wanted to make it clear that they have no intention on paying for the maintenance of that median island. The way the conditions of approval are written up, the developer would install the landscape, and then the city would deal with the landscape maintenance of it, so that it would be maintained at the same level and consistent with the existing medians. So I, you know, I think the intent is, if we have to maintain it, we have to maintain it, but they've got a portion of median that's already installed that's part in Palm Springs and part in Cathedral City, and I think the two cities eventually will probably want to talk about how that works, so the council could basically say, "We'll maintain it." Certainly, from this project, with the tax revenue, we would have sufficient additional tax growth to pay for the maintenance of that median, if that's the council's pleasure.
And, and there's no, there's no problem with us maintaining property within the city, of, within another city's right-of-way? Do we get an easement for them for that, or am I...
In a couple of cases, Mr. Mills, we have agreements with Cathedral City to do that exact thing. So it should be entered into, an agreement entered into between the councils to provide for that, if that's council's choice.
Okay. The, the other item and that is a concern to me is on Cathedral City's letter or note, the one from that, the traffic engineer. On the last comment on page three, the very last sentence reads, "Please be advised that the final approval of the project is discretionary right of Cathedral City." Could you explain that to me, please?
I looked at that particular comment, and the project before you today, the Destination Project, the map, and all related actions are a project in the city of Palm Springs. There are no permits required from the city of Cathedral City. The only direct issue has to do with the comment that Mr. Bracken made relative to the maintenance of the median and roadway construction, and we've worked with them while one of their properties developed in this linkage regarding that. I don't know what their traffic engineer was, was trying to say with that.
So you found that comment as interesting as I did?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, are there any other questions before we open the hearing? Then at this time, we will open the hearing. I have cards of those who have, who desire to speak. You will have five minutes, and the first person that I will call is Sonia Marshan. If you please come forward, followed by Stephen Schweitzer and Karen Shepherd. Please come forward at this time. You will have five minutes. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm not going to get into a lot of specifics. Y'all have been specific to death up here, but I wanted to bring something to your attention, a really interesting article that's in the February edition of Main Street News, which is published by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And this article is by Sally Stacy Mitchell. It says, "Protecting locally-owned retail: planning tools for curbing chains and nurturing homegrown businesses." I'll be happy to provide a copy of this to the city council, but the article indicates, that says, "Another common myth, a common myth, is that new retail development, development will boost the sales tax and relieve some of the burden shouldered by homeowners. This may be the case in some places, but in other towns, they have discovered that sprawling stores require more in public services than they generate in revenue." And for example, a study which was done by Tischler and Associates of Barnesdale, Massachusetts, a city of forty-eight thousand, which is just about, I guess, the population of Palm Springs. This study compared public revenue and costs for various land uses. It found that the city's small downtown store... It found that the city's small downtown store generated a net annual surplus, that is, tax revenue minus costs of $326 per 1,000 square feet. Big box stores, strip shopping centers and fast food outlets, however, require more in services than they produce in revenue. A big box store creates an annual tax deficit of $468 per 1,000 square feet." Uh, this was for Barnstable, Massachusetts. Uh, there was a study done in, uh, Eastern Maryland, uh, which enacted a, a, because of a study which was done there, they enacted a temporary moratorium on construction of large retail stores. It, Eastern used the time to study the issue and held a series of public meetings, after which the planning commission released a report concluding, once, quote, "Once a big box retail store exceeds 65,000 square feet, it is of such a scale that its negative impacts outweighs positive ones." The town council adopted an ordinance banning stores over 65,000 square feet, about half the size of a typical Home Depot. And this article indicates that cities and towns commonly make decisions about retail development without objective information on the potential costs and benefits, usually called market studies. Often, in fact, own, the only economic data available is provided by the developer. An ordinance is now underway in, uh, in a little community in Alaska, uh, which would require a proposal for retail stores over 15,000 square feet to undergo a review. The project's impact on traffic, scenic and historic resources, tax revenue, city services, employment, the downtown business district and the city's character would be examined. If the officials determine that the store's costs outweigh its benefits, then the developer would be denied a permit to proceed. To cover the costs of the review, which would entail hiring an independent analyst, developers would pay a fee of between 300, uh, would pay a fee of $300 per 1,000 square feet. And in conclusion, uh, their conclusion is called "commercial blight." One of the most compelling reasons to establish limits and standards for retail development is to avoid the epidemic of vacancy and shopping center blight that is now sweeping the country. Countless strip malls are shuttered and idle. About one-third of all enclosed malls are in serious financial distress. Hundreds have been closed. Even the big boxes are going dark as companies like Walmart and Home Depot abandon existing outlets to build ever larger stores. Walmart alone has more than 350 empty stores nationwide. Some communities are now, uh, home to dozens of vacant boxes, creating eyesores and blight that can affect nearby property values. The problem is that most cities are, quote, "overzoned," quote, "for retail." Cities tend to zone huge swaths of land along every highway and major roadway for retail development. Far more retail than residents can actually support. For developers and chain retailers, it's cheaper to colonize green fields and empty space than to redevelop existing shopping centers. Limiting new retail growth to defined areas adjacent to existing business districts, setting store size limits and establishing economic impact criteria are some of the planning tools that can, that can save your community from this fast-growing epidemic. Thank you.
And thank you. Stephen Switzer, followed by Karen Shepherd. Please come forward, be ready. Karen? Thank you. Good evening. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I won't need five minutes. Um, my name is Stephen Switzer and I am the staff director for the Labor's Local 777. We represent over 8,000, uh, public employees in Southern California, which includes 6,200 Riverside County employees, nearly 1,500 of which reside and work in, uh, the Coachella Valley. And while diff, uh, unions sometimes do have their differences, but we really want to emphasize that on this issue, the House of Labor really is of one mind, and that is, we will regard a vote for Walmart as a vote against labor, against the families we represent. And we hope you, uh, strongly consider that. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening. You will have five minutes.
Okay. Good evening, council members. Mayor Oden, my name is Karen Shepherd. I'm a 12-year resident of Palm Springs. I used to work for Walmart. I was at the Cathedral, Cathedral City Walmart in various positions for six years, but don't let this prejudice me in your eyes, as I no longer am employed by them. I'm not here as a representative for Walmart, but as a consumer. I had no idea that there was such controversy connected with the building and opening of a Walmart Supercenter in Palm Springs. All I knew was that it was scheduled to be built and opened in 2005. My husband and I are looking forward to its opening with great anticipation. We've been shopping at the La Quinta Walmart since it opened and yes, as some of you may find criticism in this, we've been doing all of our grocery shopping there and not here in Palm Springs. Why do we choose to do this? First, we are on a fixed income and Walmart affords us a better selection and better prices than any chain or mom and pop store here in Palm Springs. It's a bit of a drive for us, but we figured that soon we would have our own Supercenter almost within walking distance of, of us to enjoy. I'm very distressed that there is a faction among us that does not want the Supercenter to be built. Many residents say that it'll drive the mom and pop businesses out of town and hurt, hurt the stores on Palm Canyon. Let me tell you, as locals, we do not shop on Palm Canyon. I do not need or want t-shirts that tell me where I live, nor can I use any of the touristy products they hawk. Tourists, that is the word here, as they are the ones that will continue to shop Palm Canyon. The damage, if any, to Palm Canyon will be negligible. Too many of our residents here in Palm Springs want our town to stay, as they call it quaint. To keep us quaint is to hold us back. We don't offer, offer our locals affordable places to eat. Fast food is almost nonexistent in Palm Springs and there's very little for our children to do here. As, it is though we have a sign on our border saying, "If you are under 50, stay away." The Supercenter will provide hundreds of new jobs. Yes, they are low-paying. Yes, they are non-union, but I can tell you from experience, trying to get a job at Albertson's or else is next to impossible. Someone has to die there to get, to get one of those good-paying jobs. The Supercenter will help out our seniors by providing them a place to shop that is affordable. Before you condemn the Supercenter and stop its progress, think about your neighbor who may need and want that Supercenter, what the Supercenter has to offer. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. P. Byron Dennison II, followed by Fred Mesa and Mario Gonzalez. Please come forward. Good evening. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, member, uh, uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Philip Byron Dennison. I'm 28 years old. I'm a lifelong Coachella Valley resident. I've lived in every Coachella Valley city except Indian Wells, Palm Desert and Rancho Mirage. I have worked at the Cathedral City Walmart for six years. I have dental coverage, a choice between two HMOs or a PPO for, um, healthcare coverage. I have a few thousand dollars in profit sharing. I have a 401K account that I contribute 20% of my gross earnings into. In my six years with Walmart, I have more than doubled my hourly wage. I have several friends who have gone into salary positions. One friend even became a district manager. Some of these associates have college degrees. A lot of them did not. I do not have a college degree, but I do have the opportunity to move up in a company without a ceiling in sight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And thank you.
Mayor, Council?
Good evening, Fred. Would you?
I don't think I can use five minutes.
Okay. And you reside in Cathedral City?
I live in Cathedral City. I've been in the valley 31 years.
Welcome.
Um, I've got seven years with Walmart. I'm a department manager of electronics over there. And one of the things I like working about at Walmart is that they have a code atom, what they call a code atom, because parents lose their kids and all of the associates all, at the same time, we want a little hunt for these kids and we find them. We've saved a lot of lives that way. Uh, another thing is that I used to belong to unions and we don't have a union at Walmart here. And, and I'm glad of that because when I worked for a union before, they ran out of money and they forced me to go poach for food for my family. Uh, just last week, a neighbor of mine left her home because her union let her down and she couldn't support her kids or the rent there. And at Walmart, you can truly say we are family down there. I've got three brothers and 11 sisters here to prove it. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening, Mario.
Mario.
Mario, and you reside where?
I work in Cathedral City Walmart and I live in Palm Desert.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I had been, I had been living in, in Palm Desert yet for like a year. Before that, I was living here in Cathedral City. Um, first of all, I want to share my experience with you, uh, working with Walmart. As an associate, I can tell you that I have an opportunity for a career. I started four years ago as a sales associate, working as a, at the present as a training coordinator in the personnel office. I get a training with them. I still going to college. I have time for that, too. I'm a single mom. I have all the benefits that I want to have. I have been, uh, medical insurance, dental insurance, 401K, for, uh, profit sharing, uh, life insurance for me and my, and my children. I'm a single mom, like I told you. And what is very important, they offer that to me and they offer us to my children. And this is what, it's the same for all the associates. I work in a store that we have, you know, 300 associates and I really, what I can tell you is I love working in that company. And, you know, it's a place for opportunities. We have choices. You want to have a career, you want to be a cashier, you know, it's your option there. It's a freedom there. Uh, I would like to share with you my experience as a, as a member of the community, as a customer. I can tell you that Walmart, last year, Walmart Cathedral City have, uh, more than 40, you know, $54,000 that contribute, that give us a contribution to that community. This include, uh, Palm Springs High School, Cathedral City High School, the Fire, the Cathedral City Fire Department, uh, the Children Museum and Rancho Mirage, all around the community. I really recommend Walmart in the community and, and I'm very happy. As a customer, yes, as an associate in Walmart, and I, I'm sure that my associate in the store, 300, we had the same experience. Thank you.
And thank you. John Reeves, Elaine Borton and Fred Demper, please come forward. You will have five minutes. Good evening and welcome. Elaine is next.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Oden. Uh, I'm, uh, I don't know if you can tell or not, but I'm a senior citizen. Very, very senior. And I just, uh, there, I hear a lot of things about Walmart and having worked there for three years, the things that I can tell you about it are that they are very, very senior citizen oriented in hiring and in customers. I work in the garden department and I'm fortunate enough to meet an awful lot of senior citizens who want to do their garden work. A great many of them live in Palm Springs. And to a one, they're all happy with what they receive there. They receive the service, they receive the, uh, the product that they want, oftentimes at a price that they can't match other places. It's a, uh, you know, as a senior citizen, I looked, when it came to Palm Springs, I looked for two years for a job, for people to hire. And, uh, everybody said, gee, you've got wonderful experience, you're a great guy, but you're too old. Walmart, I came to the door and talked to them. They said, gee, your experience is wonderful, uh, we want you. So I don't think you can match that in a lot of places. So I, I have nothing but positive things to say about Walmart and, uh, thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. Good evening, Elaine, and welcome, followed by Fred Demper. Is that Remper? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Elaine Brayden and I am the store manager of Cathedral City Walmart. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of myself. Um, I wanted to tell you that I'm very proud to work for Walmart as a company. I was a divorced mom several years ago and worked for a different company, did not have the opportunity to grow. At Walmart, I was given that opportunity and again, I'm very proud. I've been with them for 13 years. I've been a store manager for eight and a half years and I've been a store manager here at Cathedral City for four and a half years. I, um, have approximately 300 associates that I work with every day and they're a great group of people, if you've met some of them this evening. Walmart gives us all the opportunity to grow. We have health benefits, 401K, profit sharing, and 80% of my associates are full-time. Um, we give back to the community, as my coordinator also let you know, we've given over $54,000 back to the community of Cathedral City in ways of the fire department, the police department, uh, several other, um, things that we've done with the community. Also in the school district, we've given back to not only Cathedral City, but Palm Springs School, as well as Desert Hot Springs School. Uh, again, thank you and I appreciate this moment to talk with you all.
Okay. And thank you. Good evening, Mr. Remper, followed by Barbara Austin.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Uh, I am a 10-year employee at Walmart and the experience that I like to give tonight is I have macular degeneration and I have, I had quite a few operation, laser operation and all this. And with Walmart, they were able to modify my job and I was able to keep the job and I am working as I did before with just a few minor, uh, changes in the responsibilities I have. Thank you.
And thank you. Ms. Austin, followed by Raymond Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm also a Walmart associate who've been, who has been with Walmart for almost eight years. And I can tell you that all the benefits that women have at that store, or any of our Walmart stores, is tremendous. At any time that you want to move up in the company, you have the ability to do so. Plus, we have all the, the benefits of our medical insurance. My husband is also on my medical insurance, which a lot of places don't, and I'm a full-time associate, so I really appreciate working for Walmart. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I'm not a Walmart associate. Uh, I'm sorry, Raymond Johnson. Um, I am familiar with-
Your city of residence, please.
I live in Temecula. I'm representing, um, a group of, um, Palm Springs residents, uh, called Protect Palm Springs. Um, I'm familiar with Walmart. I was born and raised in South Central Kansas, uh, spent 20 years in, in Missouri, uh, saw one of the first super Walmarts that ever opened in, in Missouri long ago. And, uh, one thing that I can tell you is, when Walmarts go into towns, uh, they don't generate new revenue. Uh, they simply take sales tax revenue from existing businesses and they pay it to the city instead of the other businesses paying it to the city. They don't create new jobs. They take jobs from other businesses and they go to work at Walmart. Um, I'm a, a planner. I've got 30 years of experience as an urban planner, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, uh, my master's in planning. The area of emphasis was economic development planning. Uh, I'm also an economist and an environmental attorney. I would like to say a few things. One, the traffic study that was done in the EIR was inadequate in that it didn't consider any, any intersections in the city of Cathedral City. Uh, they only looked at impacts, uh, within the city of Palm Springs, even though Cathedral City's right across the street. They also didn't look at the impacts, uh, on the interstate highway. They found that there was no significant noise impact and yet the EIR provided three methods by which there could be a significant impact. One of those three methods was by, uh, subjecting homes to significant noise impacts that are not currently submitted, subjected to those. The traffic on Ramone increases the noise level, uh, to the point that it extends that unacceptable noise limit out by about 200 feet, which places a number of homes in Cathedral City in a significant impact that aren't currently there. And yet they found that it was not a significant impact. If you look at the, uh, uh, criteria for significance, it should have been a significant impact. There were a lot of things that weren't discussed in the EIR. Uh, they said that there was going to be outdoor container sales. They didn't say where that was going to be or how that was going to impact the parking. They didn't discuss retail that's supposed to go in on this other site and what it's going to do for parking and the fact that there would be then inadequate parking for the entire site. They didn't explain why they couldn't follow the city's ordinance requirements of 18 feet on light standards and need to have 42 feet on light standards, which will now provide nice lighting for the, uh, people across the street. EIR says it's no problem because it'll only be operated during the hours of operation. But they- no problem because it'll only be operated during the hours of operation. But they plan on operating twenty-four hours. So what's the benefit in that? The economic study is-
I'm sorry, sir, you're out of time?
It was at three minutes and fifteen seconds when I was called. They didn't reset it before the other person.
Okay, all right. I'll give you some additional time.
Thank you. There was no discussion in the EIR of Walmart's policy of allowing camping in the parking lot, nor was there any discussion in the EIR of Walmart's policy of having car sales in the parking lot. The economic section simply was incorrect in a lot of respects in that it said, well, we've got this excess capacity from the Cathedral City Walmart, but that was already taken by the Palm Desert Walmart, which they recognized elsewhere. So in reality, what you're doing is you're simply taking jobs and tax revenue from other businesses and transferring it to Walmart. Now, if you have too many businesses in town, you have not enough vacant space in town, then putting the Walmart in is a good idea. And with regard to the question of what Cathedral City, what they would have, one thing that they would have is, if you're going to do something within their right-of-way, they would have to issue an encroachment permit. And they would have the ability to issue an encroachment permit or not. So I suspect that's probably where that was coming from. In short, in summary, I guess, the issue, a couple of quick things. Findings that were inadequate and were conclusory at best. The alternatives analysis was cursory, and there was no real discussion of that. All of the alternatives were environmentally superior, and you have a duty to adopt one of the environmentally superior alternatives if those alternatives are feasible. There was nothing in the record to indicate that those alternatives were not feasible. In summary, you're not providing new jobs, you're not providing new revenue. You're simply taking those jobs and that revenue from either existing businesses within the city of Palm Springs, or from neighboring cities. Thank you.
And thank you. Nora Serrano, followed by Deborah Logan. Would you please give us your city where you reside, please?
I reside in Cathedral City.
Okay.
I'm a Walmart associate for ten years. I'm also a single parent. What I really like about Walmart is that we have an open-door policy. We don't have to pay union dues to get heard. And I think I'm proud of that, because we do get here, we get, when we say something, it's, we've been taken care of. So I am proud to work at Walmart. Thank you.
And thank you. Deborah Logan, please come forward, followed by Melinda Tramalio. Good evening. You'll have five minutes and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I, excuse me, my name's Deborah Logan. I am the Vice President of Palm Springs Now. And I am opposed to Walmart opening in Palm Springs. I currently live in Cathedral City, or I'm sorry, La Quinta, where they just opened the super center. And getting to experience a bit of that there with the traffic situations. The main issue I want to raise with the Walmart super center is the low-wage jobs that it will bring. Granted, it was supposed to be four hundred and forty-two jobs, but because of the substandard wages, and the employees are frequently limited in their hours, not offered full-time positions, therein they're not offered any medical benefits or dental benefits. Although some people here state that they are, they're lucky. According to a recent article in Business Week, fewer than half of Walmart's 1.2 million workers have insurance. Therein, the cheap labor model turns out to be costly to the local economy in that it dumps the costs on other companies and the taxpayers to support the healthcare tab for the workers who are not insured. Much less, just the primary idea of lowering the standard of living in the Coachella Valley concerns me greatly for the job market. I strongly urge you to oppose the development of the Rothbart Development and the Walmart Super Center. Thank you.
And thank you. Melinda Tramalio, followed by Ron Loyah. Good evening and welcome. You will have five minutes. Please give your city of residence.
Thousand Palms. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Melinda Tramalio. I am the president of the National Organization for Women here in Palm Springs. Seventy-five percent of Walmart employees are women on a nationwide basis. Seventy-five percent are women. Sixty percent of the employees of Walmart do not receive health insurance. The average female associate that works at Walmart makes six dollars and ten cents an hour. Men make, on the average, of a dollar sixteen more per hour than-
Please, in public comments, I'm asking that everyone please refrain from any kind of comments and/or clapping. Please. Let the person speak. You know in your heart how you feel, and that's sufficient. All right. I'm sorry, it took some time away from you. Please begin again.
On the average, men make a dollar sixteen more an hour for doing the same job as women. Next Tuesday, we are going to recognize Equal Pay Day. Women in this country still make seventy-six cents on the dollar that men make. At Walmart, it is much more discriminatory than I think most people realize. That is one of the biggest issues of the National Organization for Women and Walmart coming into this community. Maine Walmarts in the state of Maine, Maine was found to have fifteen hundred violations of child labor laws. Most of the products when you go into Walmart come from China. Read where the product comes from. It is China or it is India. Most of their products are made by children that violate human rights. We, the National Organization for Women, do not want to see children making toys and taking toys arrests out of business in this country. They get paid thirteen cents per hour in China to make these toys that we buy here at Walmart. I do not shop at Walmart. I never have shopped at Walmart. And I have been boycotting them for years because of their discriminatory practices against women in the workplace. In El Salvador, women make pants for Walmart at fifteen cents per pants. Walmart sells them for sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Children making toys bother me. And when I go into a store where I see a lot of products made in China, it bothers me, the outsourcing that has happened in this country. How can a community, how can we allow in Palm Springs here, a business to come in that discriminates against women, that has children making toys, not allowed to go to school, not being able to play with those toys, and being shipped to this country where we have children who can play with those toys? The point is here, when I heard tonight, when I heard Mr. Evans talking about the environmental impact on this community, it really shocked me. I was not aware of the environmental impact in this community. And I think that the council should consider that, the environmental impact that it will have. And Ms. Foote, you raised some good questions about the traffic impact and the trucks coming in and out of this community on a twenty-four-hour basis. Five of the ten richest people in this country are Walmart people, the children of Walmart. They have sixty-five billion dollars in their banks. That's what they have. I don't mind capitalism. I'm a capitalist. Capitalism has been good to me in this country. But let's talk about the discrimination that happens with their employees. Their employees do not get paid well. They do not have health insurance. Their orientation when they are hired, they are told where the welfare line is, how to get welfare, because most of the women that work at Walmart make twelve to thirteen thousand dollars a year. That's it. They work less than thirty-two hours. The National Organization for Women, the Palm Springs Area Chapter, is against the Walmart coming into this community because of their discriminatory practices. Thank you.
And thank you. Ron Loyah, followed, once again, the clapping. Florence Clausen, you are next. Good evening and welcome. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ron Loyah, and I live here in the city of Palm Springs. I'm neither a Walmart associate nor a union member. I'm one of those people who are on a fixed income, who have to make that monthly decision of when I receive my check, do I buy food or do I buy my medications? I speak in strong opposition to the Walmart Super Center project. You know, my parents taught me that, you know, if you think it's for free and you're going to get a good deal, you know, you better look twice at that. And I think we, as a community, have to do that. I believe as a community, together with our city council, we have a long legacy and we have prided ourselves in being both business-friendly and also socially responsible. I ask you to not take the short-term myopic view of, hey, six hundred and forty thousand dollars annually on sales tax. You know, our city's hurting, like cities all throughout this state. And on the short term, that looks good, four hundred and fifty jobs. But I ask you to take the long-term view of what are the negative impacts? What do we know today? Currently, Ralph's markets, Ralph's stores in California have shut down fifteen of their stores, simply because Walmart said they were going to open forty super centers. We're already feeling those impacts, and there's going to be more trickle-down impacts. Councilman Foote, you talked about the big box empty. Cathedral City's going to have a big box. I know in past times, we've decided not to have another Walgreens here because we didn't want to have them in competition and shut down another pharmacy in this community. So I ask you to look at the long-term view of what are we going to lose here? We're going to substitute good-paying jobs with workers who are working in our stores and markets today, who have good benefits for their families. And we're going to substitute them for low-paying, minimum-wage jobs and for minimum health benefits. How many more children can our community afford to send across the street to the Health Department, to the Healthy Families Program for the state of California? Again, on the front end, we may be getting six hundred and forty thousand on sales tax. On the back end, we, as Californians, are going to have to pay for their health care. If one child is denied health care in the city of Palm Springs because their parents lost their job, what is that impact to us? You know, do they enter the system instead of early on like they have with good health care? Or do they enter much more ill? What are the impacts financially to this? What are the impacts to our emergency room by people now having to seek care in the emergency room because they have no more medical benefits? We have to look at these long-term impacts. I also noticed in our audience, the attorney for Walmart, I don't know if that bode well for you, city council members, and I think Walmart should be ashamed of their bullying tactics that they've done recently in Inglewood and across the United States, and especially in California. I think it takes the courage, being socially responsible members that I know you to be, to look at the issues and side with the cities of Oakland, side with the cities of Inglewood and West Covina and San Marcos, and saying no to the super centers. LA City's looking at it, and San Diego County and City is looking at the same issue. You know, we have to look at the long-term effect. I don't deny our community needs good-paying jobs. I don't deny people, we look at the jobs that are available now, most are in temp agencies. People are struggling. I don't deny these courageous people who work for Walmart. They're trying to feed their families. But it should not be on the back of the rest of us. So again, I ask you to have the utmost respect for our elected leaders, because I do. I urge a no vote on this project. Thank you.
And thank you. Florence Clausen, followed by Wesley Ross.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I pretty much, first of all, I want to say, I've been a, I've been a inhabitant or citizen of the city of Palm Springs for over fifty years, and I feel very strongly about this community. I love this town. It's my town. And I've always felt that way. And so at the expense of sounding a very elitist, I want to mention that, I'll remind you how much the desert resorts agencies and all the other agencies in the valley spend to market their product. And the product is the city. We market Palm Springs. We market as a place of, it has a name, it has a panache. It's known all over the world. If you tell somebody in another part of the country, oh, I'm from Palm Springs, oh my God, that's wonderful. I've always, how is it? I've always wanted to go there. Do you want to sully that elitist, that panache? Do you want to sully that with a Walmart Super Center? Listening to these people here tonight, I had no idea that Walmart was such a wonderful place to work. All I ever knew about Walmart, and I've never been in one, is that in the paper the other night, they had a story about Walmart cheating their associates by changing the numbers on their time cards, and also how they have to clock out and then work two hours or three hours more and not get paid. I don't think that's a very, the image that we want to have a business like that in our community. And I don't think we need it. I just have a suggestion. If this item is too acrimonious a subject for you to want to vote on, why don't you put it to the people? Why don't you put it to the vote of the people like Inglewood did? Inglewood, the people in Inglewood, I have to give them credit. They had enough sense to vote against it, even though they're usually, for the most part, a rather poor community, and they could use the jobs. But yet they voted against it. Why? So why don't you give us a chance to vote against it, since there are so many people here who love Walmart and want them and need them? And there are so many of us who don't want them? Let us decide if you find it too acrimonious a decision to make, and I can understand that. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ross, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. You will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Wesley Ross. I've been a resident here in Palm Springs for about thirty-five years. I am a lower-income group of people. I enjoy shopping at Walmart. They have very good product at very good prices with very good guarantees. As far as their products being from China, even if you go to Sax Fifth Avenue, you will find products from China. But of much higher price, of course. As far as the benefits that the unions are seeking, I feel as long as the unions embrace illegal immigration, it's a rather mute point they discuss. As far as health benefits, that's probably an issue that should be addressed nationally. We are the only large industrial country in the world that does not have national health insurance. As far as Walmart pirating the business of other businesses in town, that's probably a misnomer. I'll give an example of Silver City. Silver City, New Mexico, was a dying community before Walmart came to town. It's a boom-bust economy. It's primarily mining. Walmart came to town and actually helped the community because it became a destination shopping point. People, rather than going to El Paso to do the major shopping, remained in the Silver City area. It actually attracted people from areas of Glenwood and Reserve and such, some of the very small communities in New Mexico who previously had gone all the way to El Paso. Now, once again, I hope that you vote for this project in favor of it. It's the right project in the right place at the right time. It does not impact residential neighborhoods, and it's next to Loles and is across the street are other commercial projects. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Larn Garrest, followed by Sherri Kovas. And that will be the extent of the cards I have. Good evening and welcome. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Larn Garrest. I live in Cathedral City. To level the playing field, a small businessperson wouldn't be able to extend their accounts receivable over a long period of time if they were to play like Walmart. You've heard about their accounting practices. It's been in the newspaper and everything. As a small businessperson myself, not currently in business, but having been in business, I'm appalled that a store of that size doesn't have the moral courage to pay their employees properly, to try to swindle the employees out of wages that they have properly earned. Had I done something of that nature as a small businessperson, I'd be in prison. Do we want some, a corporation of that size teaching our children those kind of morals in this community? This town stands above that. And I encourage you to vote no. Walmart has another place, but it's not here.
And thank you. Sherri Kovas? Sheri Kovas, please come forward this time. You'll have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. My name is Sheri Kovas. I work for Ralph's Supermarket. This August's going on 26 years. I am union. I'm proud to be union. I'm not here because of the union. I'm here to save my job. I've got a five-year-old son. I've got an excellent retirement, and I don't want to lose it. And I'm told within the next three years, one major supermarket will close. That's a lot of employees unemployed, more than 400, and some employees that Walmart would hire. I have gone inside Walmart, and I've talked to their employees. I wanted to hear what they had to say. I went to the Walmart in La Quinta. They make $7.25 an hour. I asked them about their health care. They didn't know about the health care. They didn't have health care at the time, but we're told that it would be readily available. I told them what I made an hour, and they asked if we were hiring. Ralph's Supermarket is hiring.
Please make your comments to the elected official.
I apologize, sir. Ralph's Supermarket is hiring right now for anybody who wants to come in and pick up an application. I've worked hard. I, I don't want to see these Walmarts come into our area and put companies out of business. I've given my, my heart and my soul to my store, and now because of Walmart, they're telling me I might not have a job. I wish you would consider what Walmart will do to our area, sir. I know you hear a lot of things that might be partial or not all truths, but please consider what this will do to us. There's going to be a lot of families who will be losing their homes if they lose their jobs. My son is asthmatic. I need my medical benefits. Just please consider that when you make your decision. Thank you very much.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. I'm going to ask you to line up, because once I see this line, I'm going to close the public comment. Okay. All right. Then I see one, two, three, four people. Mr. Tyson, you're in line. That's five people. That's it. Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Stiles, Tamaris Grove in Palm Springs. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first off, I'm not a shopper at Walmart, but I believe you should vote for the project. I think we make decisions on our development based on the general plan and the guidelines from that general plan. I don't think we should do it on emotion. I think if we have an employee issue about whether they should be union or not union, that's up to the employees. They choose to work there. I think that's their choice. There's other choices in the community, so I don't think those are issues that are really germane to your question of, of a planning issue. This is a prime retail spot. It, it does not impact residential, immediate residential areas. It's, it's where we're going to see our retail growth. I think it's important. It does, if this was west of the airport, in the downtown area, I think it would be a very poor choice. I think this is a good location. It will foster additional retail growth, which is good for this community. I think that, that in the past, we've had a reputation for chasing retail business out of this community. I think this is a strong signal that we are, in fact, business-friendly, and I would recommend that you vote for this project. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening. Please give your name to the clerk. You'll have five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Joy Meredith. I've lived in Palm Springs for about 26 years, and I've owned a business on Palm Canyon Drive since 1987, and I'm not afraid of Walmart. You know, I've had a lot of questions asked to me in the past couple of days regarding Walmart and regarding how I feel about downtown and whether I feel that that will take away from us. I find it hard to believe that people would compare Walmart to downtown. I just feel like it's apples and oranges. Downtown, we hope to make as an attraction, an experience, and, and not just for shopping. I, I just don't, I don't personally feel that I'm going to experience a problem like that. Also, I'd like to say, I, I feel that the testimony this evening from these employees of Walmart proves that, once again, there's probably a lot of miscommunication out there. I mean, when I have employees here, senior citizens, you know, and a lot of different people, their experience seems to be very positive, and I think that we should really look at that and not at rumors that we hear, but rather, these are the people that are actually working there. I'd also like to say that I think that Palm Springs suffers from a lot of retail gaps, things that we can't buy in Palm Springs. I don't like going to Palm Desert to make my purchases and giving them my tax money. I want to purchase it in Palm Springs, but there's a lot of things. I mean, you could barely find a pair of socks without going out of your way in Palm Springs. So I think that, you know, from that aspect, from, for the locals, as far as them having a shopping opportunity that they might currently be missing, I think is also something to consider. I don't feel that the Walmart in Cathedral City took anything away from us. It's not that far down the line there. So I, I don't really expect any difference from having this Walmart in Palm Springs, any other detriment than what we had when, when it was in Cathedral City. So I encourage you, as a, as an individual business owner, to support this Walmart opening. I think there'll be a fine addition of Palm Springs, and that area there is very well-suited for it. Couldn't have been in a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms., please come forward. Please give your name to the clerk. You'll have five minutes.
Joan Martin. Very brief tonight. I read this week of a town, my husband thinks it's in California, where they actually voted. Each person voted, and they voted Walmart down out of their town. Now, of course, we depend on you to take care of these things, but this is an issue of such gravity, the coming to a community of a Walmart. It has tremendous impact on everyone, that I think this particular issue could best be served by a general voting. Thank you.
And thank you.
Hi, I'm Mila Hyman. I worked, worked for Walmart for nine years.
And you're a resident?
Of Cathedral City. And this is the only thing I can say to you, that I can prove that I'm a Walmart employee, and I have my health benefits, medical benefits, and it's Health Net. Everybody wants to see it, you can see it. You can take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, you'll have five minutes.
Frank Dyson, 175 South Korea. I, I have four concerns. First of all, I, I'm concerned about the process. This has been going on for several years, and it's probably been the best-kept secret in town. I mean, for, until this meeting, it was never mentioned in any of the official communications. This was a Walmart issue, as always, another name on it. And I think if this is approved, I think you'll see a lot of surprised people in town, and maybe the idea that several speakers have put forth might not be a bad idea to have an election on this, because it is a, a major change for the community. On top of it all, I don't think it's a very good deal for this city. You know, already, people have spoken about taking away sales tax from other businesses, but what have we get for the $600,000? It, it may not be worth it. I mean, Doug Smith, who, from the Iraqi, who testified a few weeks ago here of paying $150,000 bed tax for an inn under 30, under 30 units. Four small inns could produce that $600,000 with a lot less impact on the community than, of course, Walmart would have. So I think it's not a great deal. If they were suddenly going to solve our budget problem, I would think about it twice, you know, or... The other thing is, is the impact on the city fabric. I mean, our, the charm of Palm Springs is the small merchants, and I agree with Joy Meredith, that we do need a lot of things here to buy, but I think, once you have Walmart here, I think it's going to be hard to encourage the small merchants from opening up some of these stores that we really need. And I am, I am concerned about, we have had experiences in this town with empty markets. In fact, we still have some empty markets, and I'm very concerned about, about that happening. And finally, another concern that was touched upon, and I think it's a very important one, is the image problem. I mean, we work very hard to try to give this an image. We have, we spend money on film festivals. We try to attract beauty pageants. Now, the supercenter is not going to help that image. And basically, we are a getaway community. People come here for the beauty, the charm, the glamour. There was an article about the White Party, where one of the, the participants of the White Party said, "The moment he turned off Interstate 10, he had, he felt this mystique of Palm Springs." Sonny Berner used to say the same kind of thing. This is not going to help our mystique, you know? Palm Springs, you click on the internet, it's Palm Springs, the home of the Walmart Super Center, not, you know? And I think if, if, if a modest community like Inglewood can turn it down, are we actually, are, what are we flirting with? Is this really the kind of thing we want to be known for? Is this, I think it's going to be bad for tourism. I think it's going to be bad for real estate, real estate values in the long run. So what I think is that it's not a good deal for Palm Springs. It's not going to enhance Palm Springs. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Peter Canales, and I'm the Community Affairs Manager for Walmart Stores for Southern California. I waited till the end of this public hearing, because I wanted to talk after you heard all the doom and gloom. And I've, I've heard quite a bit tonight, and the only thing I didn't hear that Walmart's going to do to Palm Springs is bring a, a flood of locusts into the community and devastate everything. But with that being said, I want to, you know, make, point out some things that have just been stated tonight that are just simply factually incorrect. And I really want to point out what this battle is all about. You know, our supercenters sell groceries, and yes, our associates have chosen not to be members of the union. That's a choice that they've made, and, you know, that's, we do not have a position against unions. In fact, Walmart is not anti-union. Many of our associates have family members and friends that are in the unions. Many of our customers are members of the union. And so, we have nothing against the union. It's just a simple choice that our associates have made. You've heard tonight about the San Diego Taxpayers Association study. I can tell you right now, if you place a call to the taxpayers, they will tell you that it would not be prudent to base any public policy decision on that study, since the data is old and it's outdated. You provided a video, I guess, yesterday, of which one of the, like, one of the videos I know covers the, the issue in San Marcos, which is in San Diego. And I would just point out to you, if you watch that video, at the very end, you'll notice it was funded by the United Food and Commercial Workers. In the audience, you have, you know, a great deal of individuals that are representative of the United Food Commercial Workers. And so, I, I want to make it clear that, you know, this is, this is really what this is about. This audience in here is not representative of the, the rank-and-file members of Palm Springs. There's an agenda and a political campaign to limit competition and protect market share. And they, and, and they have every right to do that, but we have the right to be able to come in here and bring our everyday low prices to our customers in the Palm Springs area. I, I, you know, there, there are a lot of people in here that have said, made comments about Chinese products. Well, you know, virtually every store in your community probably sells the same, you know, the same Chinese products that we sell, and I didn't see anybody in here commenting about those companies selling it. So I think, you know, there are, there are many examples of why I, I think that the, the agenda here is, is really not so much about the issues, but more about Walmart. And that's fine. They have the right to their opinion. But let me move on to about, some things about Walmart. Walmart has recently been named, the second year in a row, the most admired company in America by Fortune Magazine. In 2002, Forbes named Walmart one of the most philanthropic companies in America. Last, this, this last year with the California wildfires, Walmart donated over $300,000 in, in monetary contributions and over half a million dollars in, in merchandise to those fire victims, and of which we received the Channel 10 Leadership Award down in San Diego. Last year, we did $2.5 billion worth of sales with our women and minority suppliers. Going on to wages, you know, you heard a lot about wages tonight. Well, let me tell you. We don't, we don't have one single employee. We have over a million employees in the United States of America. We do not have one single employee that makes minimum wage. Our average wage nationally is $9.64 an hour. In the city, within the Los Angeles area, it's $9.88 an hour. In San Diego, it's $10.75 an hour. It varies from community to community. Every one of our associates are eligible for health care benefits, regardless of their, whether they're full-time or part-time. Our average is about 70% full, uh, full-time. As you heard Helen, the store manager for Cathedral City, her, her store has about 80% full-time. Our, our, we're very proud of the fact that two-thirds of our management started off as hourly associates within the company, and that's something I think that not too many other companies can, can actually boast about. And, you know, there, there just are a lot of, you know, aspects to the company that I think are, are simply misrepresented. You've heard comments about, you know, votes in Inglewood and this and that. Yeah, there, there have been votes. There's nearly 500 cities in California. We've got over 145 stores in the state of California right now, over 3,500 stores throughout the country. Clearly, you know, we have 100 million customers going through our doors every single week. Clearly, you know, people are voting with their pocketbook and their feet, and they want to be able to shop at a Walmart. And they especially want to shop at Walmart Super Centers, and I'll tell you why. A UBS Warburg study in Las Vegas a few years ago showed that our grocery prices were 17 to 39% lower than our competitors. That's a significant amount of savings, and there are a lot of people who are on a fixed income or a limited budget that want to be able to save their dollars. And so, that's an opportunity, and that's a choice that the residents of Palm Springs should have, and, you know, we want to give them that choice. So I'll be here to answer any questions you may have after the, the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, good evening.
Good evening. I, too, am not a Walmart employee. My name is Stan Rothbart. I'm the president of Rothbart Development. We are the applicant and the developer of this project, and now that we've heard all about Walmart, I'd like to talk a little bit about the project. Destination Ramon is a, an effort that began several years ago, and we believe it's the right project at the right location at the right time. When consumers are demanding today more choices, greater conveniences, easier access, and a friendly shopping environment, we feel that Destination Ramon has really hit the mark. I'd like to briefly review with you the highlights of, of that belief. As to location, the site is unquestionably located at the right place. It's on the fringe of town. It's zoned for this use. I believe I even heard at one time that there was an overlay zone for Big Box along the Ramon corridor. It, it does not compete with the Village. In fact, it complements the Village. It will keep residents shopping locally and bring in new customers. The infrastructure, it's already been mentioned several times before. The arterials are currently in place to service this project. They, Ramon is, is designed to be, sized to be a six-lane highway with turn-lane pockets providing excellent access to east and west down into the project but across the valley. Crosley and St. Louis Ray are excellent north-south arterials that will provide easy access to the project additionally. Destination Ramon, our project, will be constructing additional new improvements that will enhance those existing. On the site itself, from the moment you enter the project, from the main entrance, you approach a public art piece in a heavily landscaped area. Wide sidewalks and wide walkways encourage pedestrian travel. Oversized parking stalls enhance the shopping experience. Dense streetfront landscaping help provide for a dynamic retail corridor along Ramon, and onsite landscaping is designed to create an exciting retail venue. The architecture, I think it's the architecture that really stands apart. This, this project has more components to it than just a tenant that's going into it. The architecture's been worked on long and hard. I want to thank the Architectural Design Committee for their diligent efforts. I believe we met with them at least four different occasions. Their input was always constructive. Their contribution was dynamic. It really raised the bar on this building. I think the building is, is really, it's one of a kind. There's nothing like it in the country. It's both sophisticated and dynamic. It is also integrated with a well-designed landscape plan that's over-landscape, well beyond the requirements of the city, and a signage program that it captures the same architecture that's in the building. We expect... We expect Destination Ramon to help facilitate the vision of the city that created this retail corridor and will further enhance bringing more world-class tenants to the city. I thank you very much. I urge your support. I am available to answer some of the questions that were asked earlier. If you'd like to hear them now, I'd be happy to do so. I would also like to say we have consultants here prepared to answer any questions regarding the EIR. And one last brief comment, I'd like to thank staff for doing an excellent presentation, especially Mr. Evans for probably giving the most detailed and comprehensive presentation I've seen so far. Thank you very much.
And thank you. At this time, we will take a brief recess. And we'll close the public hearing at this time. Yeah. We'll call the meeting back to order. The hearing back to order, that is. And council comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Booney.
I do have a couple of questions. The first one is for Mr. Reddy. I know that Mr. Styles and Ms. Meredith were here tonight, speaking as individuals. Has the Economic Development Corporation...
Please, as you re-enter the council chambers, we're asking that you please keep your voices down. Thank you. Hearing is back in session.
Has the Economic Development Corporation, the Main Street merchants, or the Uptown merchants, or the Chamber of Commerce, have any of them taken an official, have taken an official position on this?
They've not indicated any position as far as I'm concerned. However, I would also like to defer that question to Doug Evans in case they've made any responses during the comment period.
Okay.
We have not received any correspondence. I believe the project has made a presentation to Palm Springs EDC. And I know that tomorrow afternoon, they do have an update on the project on their calendar.
Okay. Next question, I think probably is for you, Doug. A gentleman had mentioned potential camping or car sales. Can you address that, or can someone please address that?
Yes, one of the issues that we're still working with the developer relative to the architectural approval and conditional use permit element of this is the activities that occur in the parking lot. Walmart has, in the past, allowed people to pull their RVs and park. I think they've gone back and forth with regards to that. What we're talking about is setting up a land use permit for activities in the parking lot. And we're currently talking about what is the number of activities in the course of a year, the types of activities and things like that. We did put a condition of approval in the project that the commission would look at that would prohibit used car sales, since we do not allow used car sales independent of new car sales anywhere in town, as I recall.
And I know that you had mentioned on pads three, four, five, and six, I believe, it will probably be retail. Have there been no commitments to those pads?
The developers talked to us generally about some tenants, but they haven't released a tenant list to us. Mr. Rothbart may have some tenants lined up that he might want to talk about. But if we have a conversation about tenants and it's not officially proposed to us, staff typically doesn't talk about tenants.
The parking spaces, though, you take that into consideration with those pad developments, correct?
Yes, sir. This project exceeds the city's code of requirements for parking. I think it has, you know, good distribution of dedicated parking for the pad tenants and then a circulation system that feeds both the tenants as well as the Walmart complex. And there was a comment from a gentleman in the public about Lot 8, the not a parcel of this project. That project would have to stand alone on its parking. They would have to provide the parking for that parcel since they're not part of the project.
Okay. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question from Mr. Rothbart about, kind of follow-up of one of Ms. Vogt's questions about, do you think it will be a 24-hour facility? And really, my main interest is the trucks and the main time of truck deliveries, and not just the concern over the Genatri I-10, but if trucks are coming from Phoenix, they very well may get off at, is it Date Palm?
Date Palm.
Yeah, Vistacino. So, if you could address that issue.
Sure. The issue on operations for 24 hours is determined by the store manager, which is determined by the will of the customers. If there's a desire in the community for them to be open late, then they're open late. They dictate their hours based upon what the demands of the community are. They do have stores that open 24 hours, and it's possible that this store would be open 24 hours. As far as truck deliveries, there's two components of that. There's the grocery component, which I'd like to point out is really smaller than your typical modern-day grocery store. There's approximately two deliveries a day for groceries. They typically come early in the morning. As far as general merchandise goes, there's three to four deliveries, depending upon what the volume of the store is and the need for additional merchandise. They usually come in the evening hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could comment, I talked to Mr. Greg Indo, who is the noise consultant for the project. And he's done work not only for private developers, but the city has retained him on several different projects for us. You know, in taking a look at the noise analysis of truck traffic, if you start tracking the volumes of trucks that Mr. Rothbart did, Mr. Indo considered seven trucks, both from a traffic standpoint and impact, because they're usually off-hour trucks, as well as noise. You know, they're really hard to go in and measure. And if the trucks do come in from the east and they do come down Date Palm, which would be a long ways out of their way, but sometimes drivers do that. I'd just like to point out, with the exception... I'd just like to point out, with the exception of some of the areas on north Date Palm, the predominant land use adjacent to that trip is almost all commercial. You know, until you come over the bridge. You know, the nearest commer, or residential project, you know, is not in that sequence, except for maybe some of the very north Date Palm areas. And most of that area is undeveloped or developing right now. And they're having to develop those properties with six-lane roadway. They're having to do the same noise mitigation that we do in Palm Springs. So those projects are designed to accommodate and respond to the fact that they're going to have truck trips on those big roads.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Evans, a couple of quick questions. We're looking at a tentative track map and an EIR. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and then also the vacation of the roadway.
Okay. And is, so we are not looking at an architectural approval?
No, sir. The architectural approval side of this, as well as the conditional use permit, was not acted upon by the Planning Commission. I think they're comfortable with the overall project design, but we're working out details. Project lighting, project signage, mentioned the onsite operational issues. But I think the commission has had several study sessions, and they seem to be comfortable. But they chose not to make the recommendation yet, because they wanted to work out those issues.
Does, does that come to us?
No, sir. It's final with the Planning Commission and less appealed. You certainly could instruct the staff if there were components of the project the council would like to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments?
I, yes, Mayor, I wanted to, to get an answer to that lease question.
Yes, we're happy to say we have a executed 20-year lease with Walmart on this property.
Thank you.
About 50 years of options, approximately.
So we don't have to worry about an empty store for 20 years.
Yeah, let me, let me also...
Hope it's an iron-clad lease.
It is. I negotiated. Let me just also say, on that subject, that although there have been relocations of what they refer to as Division I general merchandise stores, the relocation nationally has been to supercenters. And to my knowledge, and I've inquired, I don't believe there has ever been a relocation of a supercenter store in the United States. Now, there may be a minor exception one place or another, but the supercenters are built to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I continue?
Yes, great.
I just want to paraphrase Harry Truman, that doing the right thing is easy. Figuring out what the right thing to do is the hard part. And I've been struggling with this issue for the last couple of weeks. And it's really difficult when we look at the financial situation of our budget and the increased tax revenue that Walmart would be bringing to our city, and the attraction that it will beat for other large retailers for that area, and the lower prices for seniors and people that are on fixed incomes, and the increased jobs for our area. But in doing my due diligence, I found out that this project has always been called Destination Ramon. It's never been called publicly Walmart. And I have a problem with that, and I, I want to answer Mr. Pugnay's questions, because, no, there has not been any discussion on Main Street about, it's never been on the agenda, about Walmart. So no one downtown, the businesses have never discussed the impact that Walmart could possibly have. No one has ever brought it up for discussion at the Chamber of Commerce. No notices have been sent to the neighborhood associations that was, that this was to be discussed. And in general, this mostly has been a stealth project, as one of the speakers said earlier. So I could conclude from those findings that no one cares if there's a Walmart the size that we have, or going to have in Palm Springs. I could conclude that it doesn't matter that the first thing people will see as a land at our airport is a huge "Welcome to Palm Springs Walmart." I could conclude that it doesn't matter that the first, that, that people in our city do not care about what happens to workers and what happens to people who, who are looking for jobs, or who have jobs in our city that might lose them. I might conclude that the well-publicized labor law violations against Walmart, and this is not some scare tactic that somebody made up. I have some well-documented information with, information where you can find that in the Federal Register. I would rather conclude that we, as a city, did not take our responsibility seriously. We have held no public hearings, except for tonight. We have done very little to publicize this within our community. And we, we followed the guidelines for noticing people, but following the guidelines was not enough in this situation, because this is something that is so important to Palm Springs that I feel that it will change the fabric of our city. And maybe our city wants that, and maybe our people of our city want that. But I, I think they need to know about it, and I don't think they know about it. As a council member, I've made it a point not to operate in a vacuum. I gather information on a regular basis, and I believe the community relations person from Walmart who spoke earlier, that this audience is not representative of Palm Springs. Majority of the people that got up to speak tonight were not from Palm Springs. The majority of the people that got up to speak tonight are from a store that is closing, that now will go to a store that is opening. So, and, and I, I am sure if I was in the same situation, I would also come and speak, because my job will continue, instead of the Ralph's employee who will probably lose her job. I, I think that, at this point, I feel that I am not able to vote on this, not able to vote for this project, because I feel that we, as a city, have promoted this project in a vacuum. We have not held the kinds of hearings, we have not publicized it, we have not gone out into our communities, make sure that the business community knew about it. We have a small part of the EIR, which deals with economic impact on our businesses, and it's a very convoluted view of where our businesses are and how they'll be impacted by Walmart. So I believe that this vote tonight should be postponed. I will, if it's not postponed, I, I will have to vote against it, because I do not believe that the citizens of our city would have allowed this to happen without having input. Well, whether that's a positive input or a negative input, I would not prejudge. But I believe that they did not know that it was going to happen, and I therefore ask that we postpone this for at least a couple of weeks. Notice our citizens hold a public hearing or public information, as we did for Section 14, which I believe impacted our city a lot less than Walmart will. And so I, I would ask that we do that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second? Then that motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other comments that council members would like to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate Ms. Vogt's comments, and would like to make a few of my own. First, I want to thank everybody who has either emailed or called either for or against on this issue. It is certainly an issue that many people take very seriously, as we have heard here this evening. That's an issue that I take very, very seriously. There's no doubt issues on both sides, that I'm going to address just a few of them. Many of them have been mentioned here this evening. Union versus non-union employees, potential loss of downtown merchants, job creation versus job creation at lower wages, sales tax generation, or at the expense of other shops, sales tax generation, traffic issues, lower prices, free enterprise versus competition. I do believe, I mean, for the last year, there have been several articles in the paper about Super Walmart. We've read it everywhere, whether it's USA Today, or the Desert Sun, about a potential project in Palm Springs. The La Quinta store was, was something that did get a lot of exposure. And, and I do believe that many of the citizens of Palm Springs are aware that we are deciding tonight whether to approve or not approve a Super Walmart. I also take my, my job as a council member extremely seriously by trying to do as much due diligence on any topic as I can. And in preparing for tonight, and although this is a non-scientific study, I did go to the Mizel Center and surveyed a couple of different groups, the widows and widowers, and the bingo group. And I want to thank both those groups for sharing their thoughts with me. And it is very non-scientific, but I do, do have some results of some polling that I would like you all to see. One of the questions was, "Am I in favor of a Super Walmart coming to Palm Springs?" Fifty-seven responses, 75% said yes, 25% said no. Another question, "Would I buy groceries at the Super Walmart instead of the store I currently shop at?" 53% said they would stay shopping at their local market, or 47% said they would shop at, at the Super Walmart. I asked the same question about the pharmacy. 77% said they would stay at their pharmacy and not use the Walmart pharmacy. I've heard many people have said, and there were some speakers tonight, "Will it destroy the mystique or the brand?" I personally believe that the blighted Fashion Square Plaza is much more of an impediment to the downtown Village atmosphere. I do believe that this project is at the right location, at the right place, at the right time, and I do support the Walmart. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments, and everyone. Mr. Mills?
It's Mr. Mayor. I, I, I don't agree with the comments of Ms. Vogt about the, the project not being brought out to the, the public. The project's been submitted, there've been several articles for, for a long, long time. And as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't make any difference that it's a Walmart or it's not a Walmart. It is, I personally, as a councilman, do not feel that it is, it is, it is my specific job to get involved in, in a business, into how they operate, how they run their, run their people, how they run their establishment. I think it's up to the general public to determine that, whether they shop there or they don't shop there. And if we sat up here and asked, and made the same comments about every business that came in this town, there would be no business coming into this town. I, I think what we're here to look at is, is a project. Does it meet the requirements of the, of the area? Does it meet the needs of the city? Does it do what we asked this area to do? We put an overlay zone on this area a couple of years ago to encourage exactly what this project is. For us to, to do that, and to, to essentially go after this type of use, which is what we've done in, in that area, and to not support it, is, is really sending a mixed message out. Now, I look at the project, and it, it truly meets, I think, what the goals were of the Planning Commission and the City Council when the overlay zone was, was put on. And as Mr. Pugnay noted, it, it, it is a perfect place for this type of use. And it's, it is, has the, the least impact, from a, from a traffic standpoint, as, as I see it, anywhere in the, in, in the city. And it's why we put that overlay zone on there. I think it's, it's, it's high time, as, as was mentioned earlier, that we have a place in Palm Springs where we can go and buy things that we have, heretofore had to leave the city to buy. And it frustrates me to, to have to go out of this town to buy normal goods and services that you would like to have in your town, because you want to keep your tax dollars in, in town. So I think that gives an opportunity to the citizens of Palm Springs to support their, their city, and that's why that overlay zone was, was, was put on in, in that area, not only to generate income, but to, but to solve, solve a, a need. So I, I, I'm very curious, and I, and my observations have been to, from a planning standpoint, from a use standpoint, is this what we, what we wanted in the zone? Is what we'd like in, in the zone? I think it definitely is. It's a, it's a quality, it's a quality project, and I would like to compliment the, the developer, his team, and certainly our, our staff in, in coming up with a project that, that we can be, that we can be proud of, and I think is, is, will be a, 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 well, it'll be a, a one-of-a-type store in this chain, and perhaps set a, a standard for, for, for other stores. But I, I am, I am very supportive of, of, of this project, and I would, I would hope the rest of the council sees, sees as, as I do. Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
Yes. Being elected to council, you have to make tough decisions. And I, I understand why a lot of people out in the audience want to see things put to a referendum or a vote, but we just can't do that with every tough issue. It's our, it's our job to make tough decisions. That's why we ran, that's why we're, that's why we were elected. And I think it's, it's, it's not easy, there's a lot of things to weigh. There, the fact of the matter, one that hasn't really been discussed too much is the fact that Palm Springs has lost a lot of business and a lot of sales tax revenue to the East Valley. When I grew up here in Palm Springs, we used to shop at Bullock's Wilshire, Robinson's, Saks Fifth Avenue. You could buy a GM car in Palm Springs. Palm Springs Ford was located in Palm Springs. You could buy a Volkswagen in Palm Springs, and you could buy a Chrysler in Palm Springs. All of those businesses have fled to the east. Meanwhile, the development that's happened in the East Valley has been tremendous. And if you look at the, the relative sales tax revenues generated by some of our, our neighboring cities, as a percentage of their budget, Palm Springs falls very short on that. Is a, a Super Walmart the ideal store to replace things like Bullock's Wilshire? That's, that's, that's definitely an argument, I believe. I live in an area relatively close to this proposed site. Unfortunately, not close enough to allow me to abstain from having to vote on this. But the, I think it's in the right area. The, we obviously have some traffic problems that we've been trying to address with the interchanges at Indian, and also Genatri. Genatri is probably, Genatri Trail is probably one of the best roads to support... Gene Autry Trail is probably one of the best roads to support traffic. When it was built out to where it is now many years ago, there was very little traffic on it, but the city had the vision to build that thoroughfare through there. And when we ultimately do get the interchange done, I think that's going to be, that's very critical, and the City Council's aware of it, C-VAG's aware of it, and we're working on that. Like I said before, we're here to make the tough decisions, and I think that that's just what we have to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, what percentage of our budget do we receive from sales tax? About fifteen percent. And most of that comes from what area?
The biggest single thing that has an industry is restaurants.
Is our restaurants, which is very unique, because we've lost a lot of our retail sales. I've heard some very interesting comments tonight, so there are a few things that I'd like to respond to. First of all, to the members of labor who came tonight, I want to say I support labor. And during the strike, I never crossed the picket line, and I'm proud of that fact. It's just something that I believe in. But that's my personal choice. I'm not here tonight to make a personal choice about myself. This is a decision that's based upon what is good for the city. Now, having spent nine years in this seat, I've heard a lot of things, and I've seen a lot of things. And one of the things that happened, we planned specifically for a commercial retail area in Palm Springs. Now, initially, that was supposed to be for auto sales. That didn't work for us, so we had to figure out something else to do. If that store was going on the other side of Gene Autry, it would not have my support, because the location is significant to our economy and what exists in our city. Now, for people who say, well, you know, any store that comes, you know, this store's going to draw from other stores. Well, in essence, any time any new store comes into the community, that same thing is going to happen. So do we stop allowing any new stores to come into our city because potentially they're going to take away from another store? That has to be a part of the free economy that we support. Now, we are not using any redevelopment funds for this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Have we put out any incentives to lure this business into our community?
No, sir.
Okay. That's really important, because we've made no investment, and unlike, and we can't compare what happens in other areas, because we did things differently here, and they have cooperated with us a hundred percent. When they came in, we talked about design issues, and we are working with those. Those are to be ironed out, so we're not getting the cookie cutter that happens elsewhere. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The idea of lowering the standard, someone came up in their comments and said, well, you know, I wouldn't do this unless you had too many vacant lots or not enough business. Well, that's exactly what we have, too many vacant lots and not enough business. And the lowering of the standard, the fact is, we live in an area where people live, that the primary economy is based upon tourism and agriculture, and both of those are very low in terms on the economic ladder. So it's not that anything is changing in terms of this particular store. Would I like to see more jobs that are better paid? Absolutely. And I think those are some of the things that the Economic Development Corporation that we are trying to do to bring in jobs that offer a better or a livable wage for people. Is this going to be the answer to all of our budgetary problems? No, absolutely not. But is it a step in the right direction? You know, we have a reputation of running business away, and this is a very important decision to us and our future at this point in time, because so many people and businesses are looking to see whether or not we are truly going to be business-friendly. Now, we can establish all the criteria that's necessary to make sure that we have the type of store in our community that will be beneficial. How they operate within that store, I may not agree with. It might not even be a place that I shop. But the fact is, is it good and beneficial for the city? And based upon the market research that's been done, based upon the recommendations of our staff, and I tell you, on issues, I go above and beyond that. You know, in my travels, I've talked to other areas and elected officials about what's happened there and what's significant. Now, the fact is, in areas where I have seen the impact that people have talked about, those are major urban metropolitan areas or where they had built in a residential area. This is in our flight path. We're not going to build residences in that area. No single-family homes are going to go there. So it is a perfect place for some type of retail. What type? Well, we've looked at auto sales. Now, we're looking at big boxes, and that's, or I should say commercials, not necessarily big boxes, because we may not have any more of those, but commercial retail. A lot of effort has gone into this and a lot of negotiations on behalf of our staff, and that's important. I would like to address a couple of things regarding our sister city, because certainly we don't want, and I would not want to do anything directly that would hurt Cathedral City or any other of our sister cities. So I'd like to look at some of the comments that they made in reference to soliciting our cooperation as a member of that subcommittee. I know that we have talked about some things, and if we would like to, when an emotion is made, to address those issues, I think in Item 1 and 2, with a now, therefore, from the City Attorney Amendment, if we have a motion to that effect.
In terms of the resolutions, if there was something you wanted to insert or if you wanted to, in terms of meeting and talking with them, give directions some other manner, you can do that.
Okay. All right, then, council, what would be your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just a quick question before I mention.
Sure.
Mr. Evans, you mentioned this also includes the vacation of the street. Is that vacation included in the tentative tract map, or is that a separate item? Because it's not listed here as a separate item.
It's actually in the resolutions, and it's covered in the map and the conditions of approval.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the resolutions for the EIR and the tentative tract map. And as far as your comment on Cathedral City, Items 1 and 2, which had to do with the work with Cathedral City and C-VAG for the Tump funding and for the widening of the bridge, I think those are certainly appropriate.
And that the sub, well, this doesn't have to be included in that, but that the subcommittee would still work with their subcommittee on other related issues. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I will second Mr. Mills' motion.
So we have a motion and a second? Yes.
Well, just for clarification, is the intent that the motion is just dealing with the resolutions in front of you and that we're going to do something separate in terms of the subcommittee and working with Cathedral City? Would that be a separate action, the way?
Well, I think Items 1 and 2 had to deal with the EIR.
Yes.
And the subcommittee could certainly, I mean, I don't know that we'd need a motion for that. We're just going to do it, so.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and this may help clarify for that portion, actually, speaking with the city manager of Cathedral City today, we agreed to schedule as soon as possible that subcommittee to have this specific discussion, so that will be on the subcommittee's calendar.
Okay.
And if I could, I think they are talking about it in terms of it being something that affects them, but when you say it's a part of the EIR, the issue is whether you're making it a specific mitigation measure. I don't think we have specific wording about, the way it's worded, it's really kind of a work-together sort of thing.
Yes.
Potentially, instead of it being a mitigation measure, it is something that you could instruct us to do in terms of working with the subcommittee to try and work on those issues and continue working with the subcommittee.
Then that's the direction. It doesn't have to be included in the motion. Okay.
So, in other words, if we extract it from the motion, then we just make the comment that that should be, that we are intending to do that?
Potentially, what you can do is go ahead and make your motion on the resolutions and act on that, and then separately, if you would like us to work with Cathedral City on the Tump funding for these various things, that could be a separate direction that you would give.
I honestly don't see why it can't be part of the conditions of approval of the map, even if we don't do it on the EIR. I mean, we certainly have other conditions of approval on the map.
If you choose to do it that way, that is fine, but I'm not, they're saying a Tump fee commitment for both cities. It's not clear in terms of it being a condition as to what you're requiring yourself to do. It's not totally clear to me what specific thing you're doing. And when it talks about working with staff to prepare a joint application, normally mitigation measures are fairly specific about what they.
But if it's a condition of approval for a map.
Conditions of approval are fairly specific.
Okay, Mr. Evans has a point he'd like to make.
Yes, if I could maybe make a suggestion, you know, the two resolutions outline the actual project approvals and the findings for the project. Since this is a cooperative effort on behalf of the city with Cathedral City, I'd suggest we not make it a condition of approval of the map, because then the developer, it's in his entitlement, and maybe what you could do is have the motion on the two resolutions, and then in the motion, as a separate item, direct the city manager to work towards accomplishing Items 1 and 2 with Cathedral City. And I think that way, the staff knows what we have to do, and the subcommittee is our political contact.
Ms. Clerk, I'll amend my motion to do just exactly what Doug said.
And the second concurs?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question, going back to what Chris said. The conditions that the Planning Commission is going to look at, such as the, I didn't hear a clear answer to the campers in the parking lot that Mr. Pugnay asked, is all of those things going to be coming before the Planning Commission or?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to be meeting with Mr. Rothbart, I think, on Monday or Tuesday of next week to go through those issues, so we can prepare a report to the Planning Commission, and we'll keep the council apprised.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to say that my vote is coming from the fact that I don't feel we've had a public hearing, so.
Okay, which we opened last week, and we're reopened tonight. Roll call.
I just need one other clarification. I'm sorry, but the planning director did submit a revised 3A60 with those conditions. Doug, I want to make sure that that's.
Yes, that had to do with the public art representing the culture of our local tribe and then the cultural resources, and we submitted those. They're just minor adjustments to the conditions.
My intent to include those.
Thank you.
And the second concurs?
Thank you. Ms. Fote?
Are we voting on 3C or 3B?
Both of them.
No.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. And it passes 4-1. Council comments, announcement, interagency reports. Then added starters?
There are none, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of staff. Did we, have we set yet a date for the visioning process? When are we going to be doing that?
Ms. Fote, at the, one of the prior meetings, we'd had a discussion that was to be scheduled sometime post-April 15th, and we have a study session, the last meeting of this month, and there's some discussion about having the neighborhood process on that meeting.
What is the date for that meeting?
Twenty-eighth. I get you.
Yeah.
Okay. So actually, council has not set a specific date for the retreat slash workshop visioning process. I would hope to be able to do that by next Wednesday, so we'll be beyond the April 15th deadline and schedule that as soon as practicable for council.
I think the deadline was, there was no April 15th deadline. Mr. McCullough just didn't want it scheduled on a day before April 15th. Not that we couldn't schedule a date before that, because, you know, calendars are getting full, so I'd like to schedule that as soon as possible.
It's fair game for a special meeting or a council study session type day meeting. What I would suggest, I can do one of two things. One, I can have our staff, clerical staff, contact each of you for dates, or we could come next week at our next meeting with your calendars, and we could just pick one at that time.
I'd like to see you contact us for dates, so that by next meeting, we have a date.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
I know you want to go last.
No. I'm sorry. I'm ready to go. I want to go first this time.
Just a quick comment. The last two meetings, we've heard from the Taxi Association about.
The franchising.
The franchising, number one, and also about the signage. And if I'm not mistaken, last meeting, the comment by the president was that they had purchased the, I forget what they call them, the signs on the top of the cabs to be delivered and installed in May. I just want to make sure that, you know, that the Taxi Association understand that we are going through the process of amending the ordinance. Amending the ordinance will not be done by May, whichever way it goes, just from a logistics standpoint, it will not be. And I just, I mean, the Taxi Association for the last year or two years has worked very well, I thought, done a very, a very good job and a professional job about following the rules and making sure everything was done the way it was supposed to be done. I would hate to see them, at this late date, do something in violation of what our ordinances are. And so I don't know if they just didn't understand where we were, what we were, where we were going at this point, but there's certainly nothing official, nor will I think, nor just based on how things usually go for ordinance changes, that it will happen during the month of May. So I would like staff, if you would, to contact Mr. Santos and just review that with him, because as I said, you know, I think they've handled themselves very well through this whole situation.
And that's a very good point, Mr. Mills. And also, made a commitment that that ordinance would be submitted to all the cities who have said that they want to cooperate, they just want to copy. So that will also add to that process in terms of the time. So there are a couple of things that need to happen. I do understand their frustration, because we've been at this for a long time, but we will need their cooperation a little longer. Okay, additional reports or requests? Council reports or requests?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We need to set a date for our board commission dinners. We should probably do it fairly quickly. We should probably do it fairly quickly. Usually, it's the second week of June or something like that, and so maybe we're looking at dates next meeting anyway, I know for our interviews, and maybe we could think in mind, keep in mind a time or a date for that.
And we still haven't had our council cabinet.
Yes.
And we still have the interviews.
Yeah, and we're supposed to set those dates next meeting, I think.
Okay.
And Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you probably don't know, but your dates have already been set, at least the ones I'm sharing with you.
Yeah, I heard. I don't know what they are.
Because I know the right person to tell.
Yeah, you were the first one. Also, on the request, if we could have the staff to look at the CVTOH proposal here and also look at the franchising possibilities with some numbers for us, its feasibility study.
And, Mr. Mayor, one more comment, and that is, I would like to receive a report back from staff, and I know that the mayor's involved in this somewhat, on where the city stands on the Veterans Day Parade and our involvement therein. It's getting close to the final hour to make a commitment to it, if that's what we're going to do, and I think we need to react quickly.
And you're right. We're meeting soon, but we need to make a decision about the level of participation, exactly what we want to do to actually endorse the parade, which we have not done previously as a council, so we need to do that. And staff reports or requests?
There are none.
Good. Then we will adjourn this meeting. Our next regular meeting will be April 21st at 7:00 PM in the council chamber. Our next study session will be April 28th at 7:00 PM in the large conference room. Closed sessions begin at 5:00 PM each Wednesday. Good night.